United States of America, the citizens of this state, we are a nation under our universal liberty and justice law. All will please. This is Thompson, here is Mr. Nelson. Present, Mr. Hughey.
Present.
Mr. Thompson, present.
Present.
Okay, thanks for the adoption of the agenda. I move to adopt the agenda for the June 23rd, 10:00 to 11:00 by regular meeting.
Support. We have a motion, Mr. Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, public hearing. Treat the budget hearing, 2526. Adam, this vote's a chief. We need a motion to go into a public hearing.
I move to approve the budget hearing.
Support. We have a motion, we support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Budget hearing open.
At this time, do you take any questions from the audience? If they have any questions?
Is there anyone in the audience that has a question about the budget? For the budget, treat the budget hearing for 2526. Hearing none, we can make a motion to close the budget hearing.
I move to close the budget hearing.
We have a motion, it's support, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda.
Understood, agenda, you're curving the minutes, we're scheduling in June 9, 23, 5. Close session, minutes of June 9, 23, 5 of the session. You're also curving the down of fund bills, the amount of two hundred and forty. For two hundred thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, pay price of CTP world, back to the amount of twenty one thousand, four hundred and seventy one dollars, portion of the portal, two hundred twenty two thousand, one hundred sixty six dollars, thirty two cents. With check number seven zero five one one through seven zero five six, five six zero in the ECA, transfer the amount of one million, seven hundred thousand, seven dollars, ninety two cents, for a total of one million, two hundred and ninety two thousand, one hundred sixty four dollars, twenty four cents, with no voided checks, and additional bills in the amount of ninety two thousand, four hundred forty nine dollars, eighty eight cents, with check number seven zero five six one through seven zero five eight seven, check number seven zero five six two, voided, with a sinking fund bills in the amount of seventeen thousand, eighty four dollars, thirty two cents, with check number four zero zero five one, and no voided checks. Personnel, the termination, Anna Lehman, junior, junior high, high school care pro. I'm looking for the items that are going to come back in the afternoon.
Support. All right, we have a motion, and support, consent of agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Board recognition and celebration, do we have any tonight?
No, I just want to wish the bomb in the box, who makes America today, for his competition. So, hope to go have a winner for the conference.
Thank you. Anything else? Administrator reports. Who would like to start?
I'd like to start. The elementary school is wrapped up. Almost all of our reports are needed by the state, for the state by June 30. And, all the evaluations are done, we've been interviewing for the elementary position, we had first batch of interviews on last Monday, and then we did all the interviews today. So, team debrief, and we'll be doing some reference checks later, and we should have a candidate interview soon. I know that Commissioner Kelsey is going to be leaving, he won't be staying until after, obviously, my close second evaluation, and next when I do my superintendent comments. So, if you don't mind, I would like to express a few words about what you mean to students and the families and, and any men. Yeah, because I didn't want to screw up, I wrote it down, and I did it till later. As you transition into your new professional role, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to you for all you've given to Memphis Junior Senior High School. Throughout your tenure, you faced challenges that would have tested, that would have tested anyone, and yet, you responded with grace, dignity, and a remarkable sense of calm. In doing so, you modeled resilience and compassion for everyone blessed among you. I've had the pleasure of watching you grow, both professionally and personally, through these experiences. You treated everyone with respect, patience, and kindness, and you tried to cultivate an environment that was student-focused, in an effort to change student life. And for all of that, and so much more, I am a better human than ever. Thank you so much.
This is my phone, please.
It has been an excellent pleasure being here at Memphis Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity from each of you. I've grown not only administrative, but board, and I look forward to seeing Memphis continue to do great things, and I thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you again.
Thank you, and you're going to be great in this.
You'll have me pick it out if I got the wrong side, because there's good for seated there.
All right, well, we'll move into the junior senior high. The junior high wrapped up the school year with a fun and memorable field day. It was a great time, all involved, luckily it wasn't 99 degrees outside. Want to give a big thank you to all the parent volunteers, and the staffs, organizing, fantastic events, thank you again, it's been a big honor to have you. Sixth and seventh grade award ceremony was a fantastic event. Students were recognized for their tremendous effort on N W B A, also receiving specific awards for individual course. Well done to all of our sixth and second grade students. Our tradition of eighth grade promotion breakfast ceremony was another success. Families joined us for a wonderful breakfast, followed by a ceremony celebrating students' promotion into high school. Several students were recognized for their achievements and accomplishments throughout the school year. The junior high national honor society enjoyed an annual trip to the Toledo Zoo. Everything went smoothly, thankfully, and students had had a fantastic time exploring and learning all about the animals. Thank you to Ms. Dana for organizing that fantastic trip. And, we gave our district softball and soccer teams, along with Kai Fisher, a spirited send-off. It was a clapout, as he went to state finals and they went to districts. It was a school-wide clapout, and thank you to the band and all the staff members who participated and helped make this a special home for all. So, I wanted to, again, give a couple highlights for the end of the year, junior senior high, all of the evaluations, everything's complete, and I look forward to great big thank yous, and thank you.
Thank you. And Janelle.
All right, we finished the year with 60 positive off for spring girls, we'd love to see some more next year. Spring sports summary, girls soccer finished the season 11-3, they clinched back-to-back district titles, and lost to Everest Legion in the regional semifinals. We also had AICL Conver made All-State honorable mention, that's the most. Track had a great season despite having a small team. Kai Fisher went to state, seen the 100 and 400, and he just missed All-State by not even full second or something of sorts. Finished ninth, eighth, eighth in small state. J D varsity softball, softball's district champions, and I did check in the showcase, the last time we won a softball district was 2003, so it's been 22 years since we had a softball title, so they went on to regionals from there. We started the junior high and junior high softball and baseball, they both did extremely well, softball finished 14-3, and junior high baseball 11-1. And then varsity baseball had a rebuilding year, but they did well, I thought. Golf performed well, improving each time, I know the guys all had a blast for that. We reported no concussions in the spring season and no major injuries, except for a broken thumb. We did end up hosting districts, and it was cold, but they were successful, and a lot of help went into that, I'll have the final report from that here soon. Fall schedule's next year completely done and ready. We have a lot of interest in some kids wanting to start a junior high golf club, so we're looking into that, and we have a bunch of open coaching positions, J D volleyball, assistant varsity volleyball, cross-country basketball assistants, track junior high baseball for next year, so anybody knows many good people.
Thank you. Adam, do you want to do yours with your reports, or?
Sounds good.
No, I have nothing.
Okay, no comment. Onto correspondence, we have the turn school on notes, we made of 2025. Better sure everybody gets them. Any comments on that for anybody? Okay, action items. Awarding bids.
Can you hear me? There we go. Don from Martin Mall, hello everybody, project manager, brought you guys some gifts today, some brownie points for you guys. Here to look to get you guys to award Bitpack 3, which is some work here at the high school and also at the elementary school. With a weight room here at the high school, we're doing a new media center here, with pretty much a TV studio for the students. Also, working in the robotics room, new fire alarm system, new control systems at old schools. We had a great turnout for bids, we had 66 people mention that they were going to turn bids in, we had 54 bids turned in on this project. And that's, if you guys think you, that's a great turnout for such a small project. Whipton Engineering, we were looking to get awarded 1.8 million dollars to do that work, and it would commence in September of this year, and we've been doing the work during the school year. So, it would be done before the end of the school year next year, in the spring. Just looking for your approval on that, if you have any questions from the award recommendation that sends everyone, through Sarah, please let me know. And then Jeff had also sent over Bitpack 3.2, which was a technology portion of that, which is for cafeteria and both gyms at old schools. And that was about 92,000 dollars and some change, and we're looking for the award of that as well, and those will work concurrently with each other, and be done at the same time. Any questions?
Got it. A moment. So, I don't, any questions, is anybody else important, have any questions on that? Okay, so, we have a motion for Bitpack.
I move to approve Bitpack, number three, more as presented.
Support. We have a motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing none.
On to the mention, payment of half a million dollars on the budget. So, we have some money, two payments.
Your condition.
It sounds very good, I'm recording that dude showing the comments.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and second for Bitpack, it's a reward number three, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We now need a motion for Bitpack 3-2.
I move to approve Bitpack 3-2, a board as presented.
Support. We have a motion and support for Bitpack number 3-2. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And motion carried. Okay, elementary gym update.
Thank you. So, the week after the Fourth of July, they'll have the testing engineer out for the gym space, shortly after that, we should get their test report back, and then the structural engineer will work with them to come up with a plan for the design in order to secure that. Sarah, for tomorrow's meeting, we can come with a written schedule for you, but I'd like to just preview that to your team, and have that prepared for you. Once we get the testing engineer in there, we'll be able to provide a board that assessment to you guys, so we'll plan maybe for the next meeting to come, and maybe do a PowerPoint if we have the technology for that, maybe a quick rundown of what they discovered, and what the plan is.
At this point, would your fees, like, don't use the gym, I mean, is that something that they could tell us?
No, talking with the structural engineer, he doesn't think that there's anything imminent. The one wall that had the biggest concern, or the one arch that had the biggest concern, appears to be bearing on that block wall, so I don't think there's any immediate concern with anything, but again, once that testing engineer comes in there, we'll be able to let you know that for certain.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the elementary and elementary? Thank you. Final budget, it's all yours, Adam.
Okay, so, we finished the year projecting a operating loss of 229,000. Projected fund balance is 1,443,960, at 12.79%. The major changes from this final budget version compared to our A2 budget version was, we had an adjustment to our property tax, we had a larger delinquent income tax than was originally anticipated, so some of that will be collected throughout the upcoming this year. We had an increase in sick day payout expenses for some additional retirements, and then we had some increases in bus driver treatment expenses. But the main difference was the decrease in government tax. Anybody have any questions regarding our final budget projections?
The property tax issue, is that something that's going to continue with less revenue?
No, essentially, so it was basically a timing issue. As, as property tax values increase or decrease, that affects our, what we receive in our per pupil foundation, so we're guaranteed a servant per pupil foundation, and the state essentially says, here's what we expect you to collect in property taxes, and we'll pay you the difference. And, because at the end of the year, there were still additional property taxes that were uncollected, and considered delinquent at this time, we will eventually collect them, and if they remain uncollected, then the county steps in, the county pays the delinquent property taxes, so at this point, it was a timing issue, and we'll look forward.
And then, will that go on to next year's budget, or do you have to amend this year's budget since we're doing the final budget tonight?
No, it'll go on to next year's budget. Every year, we have a line item in there for delinquent property taxes, and just this year was a little bit larger than originally.
Thank you. I have a motion, all three of them, food service and internal.
Yeah, so, internal accounts, we essentially just take the activity throughout the year, and then report it based on actual activity, so I just update the budget from the actual activity for the year, that represents all of our internal accounts. Food service, we had a small loss, we're down to about a 6% fund balance on the food service, which is not bad, you want about break even. And, I've been in talks with Laura Nicholson, and moving forward, we're going to take a look at, to make sure that our pricing is aligned properly, and our staffing is aligned properly. It's a little bit more of a challenge with free lunch and breakfast, because we're maxed out at a certain reimbursement rate for the state. So, we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room in what we can charge for things, because essentially, what we're seeing is all of the à la carte items, which are the items that the students still have to pay for, we're just seeing a reduction in what they're, the use of those, so most people are just taking advantage of the free lunch and not buying the extras that they need.
Did that have anything to do with why a year ago, they put the parfaits in, and a whole bunch of different food in, and then it didn't like continue as much this school year? Was that because of it not being available at a lower cost?
Yeah, that had a little bit to do with it, in talking to Laura, what she believes is happening is that students would bring lunches from home, and then not like what they got, and then buy the additional à la carte, so not buy the full lunch, whereas now, students are not bringing lunches because it's free lunch and breakfast, and they're just taking the one meal, and not going out for seconds, and not purchasing a second meal, and they.
Right, so we have a motion to approve the final revision of general fund food service and the charitable foundation scholarship budget for 2024.
I move to approve the preliminary budgets of the general fund food service, oh no, the final revisions, I'm sorry, one down. For the general fund food service and internal accounts and scholarships budgets for 2024, 25 as presented.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Member Key, supported by Member Bob Seag, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, preliminary budget for 2526.
Okay, so, the preliminary budget, the one thing I need to make note of is that there has still not been an approved state budget, which makes it somewhat difficult for districts to plan for a new budget for the upcoming year. From talks around the state, and from the superintendent meetings that Sarah had been to, the approach that most districts are taking is conservative. Last year, we had all three, the House, the Senate, and the governor, all projected per pupil foundation increases of over 200 dollars, and so that's what we planned for with our preliminary budget last year, and then at the last second, it was actually like the 29th of June, they approved the budget after all districts had approved, and approved a zero increase per pupil. So, this year, in working with Sarah, we decided that again, we want to make sure that we're taking a conservative approach. All three, the House, the Senate, and the governor are projecting substantial increases to per pupil foundation of almost 400 dollars. So, at this point, what we did was, we kind of took, again, a very conservative approach and used 200 dollars. History has been, it's about 200 dollars per year, so we stayed conservative, and that's consistent with what other districts in the county are doing as well. So, I used a 200 dollar increase per pupil to our foundation allowance, and then on the student side of things, we projected down 50 students. So, it's still quite unknown of what our students enrollment counts are going to be for next year. From, from my discussions with Sarah, and knowing what we know as of right now, we feel like 50, down 50 students is a pretty, pretty, pretty good approach to take at this point. It could be more, we just don't know at this point, but down 50 is kind of the best information we have to work with right now. The other part on state aid is there's a lot of unknowns, in the last several years, there've been a lot of categorical line items that they have put in, based off of COVID funding that has carried forward. The state school aid fund was quite healthy, so they've been doing this one time, and then they'll carry it forward the next year, the next year, the next year. So, we have several items that we do not know if they're going to continue to carry forward. So, at this, at this point, all the information has told us that there are certain line items that will fail to renew. They've been included in some of the budget proposals, but not all. So, for the preliminary budget, again, based going off of that conservative approach, I fully included the revenue items that I know for sure are going to be approved in our ongoing plans. So, with that being said, we are looking at a operating loss of 138,000 for next year, and a projected fund balance of 1.3 million, so an ending fund balance of 12.32%.
How many seniors left, and how many do we have enrolled in compared to next year? Do you know?
We had Kinder Roundup Confederacy, we saw very high numbers at Kinder Roundup, but that is always, you know, fluctuating, as of right now, including, I'm sorry, as of Kinder Roundup, including ones interested in, we're changing it to Young Fives, because about Mount Pay, we survey parents, has a negative connotation, so between Young Fives and Pay, we saw 60 come through at Kinder Roundup, but, you know, how we see them. Yeah. I believe it was 67. 67. And then that group is 50 back, so the incoming seniors.
Right, can we have a motion, please, to approve preliminary budgets for general fund food service and internal establishment for 2526. Support. Motion with support to approve preliminary budgets, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, now we have the resolution proceeding.
I move to approve the resolution for state aid note not to exceed 865,000 dollars from the state, from Michigan Finance Authority to meet cash flow operating needs for the 2025, 26 year as presented.
Support. It's moved by Member Rosemary, by Member Bob Seag, to approve the revision to state aid note. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Contract for Vida Marchand. Any motion to approve?
I move to approve the contract for Vida Marchand Business Office clerk for the 2025, 26 school year as presented.
Support. Okay, a motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Sarah, do you want to turn the process on?
Okay, for the junior senior high principal vacancy, there was a team of eight individuals who came in and interviewed four candidates who were exceptionally qualified, and they were all very strong candidates, it was, it was actually super refreshing to see, and the team deliberated and talked, and ultimately came to a unanimous decision that they recommended for an ADAT, Janelle Poppins, to serve as principal, the next principal of Memphis Junior Senior next year. And I have full confidence that she is going to do a fantastic job.
I move to approve Janelle Poppins for the position of junior senior high school principal and contract for 2025, 26 school year as presented.
Support. We have a motion and support, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
No.
Motion passed. Okay, we now need to go into closed session for student disciplinary hearing on student 24, 25-3, we need a motion. twenty five dash three. We need a motion and then we'll have a vote call.
I move to go into closed session at 6:29 PM in accordance with the open meetings act, act two six seven, nineteen seventy six, for the purposes of student disciplinary hearing, student number two zero two four dash two five dash three.
Support. Any motion in support? Vote call vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are now in closed session. Whereas the administration has recommended that the student whose identity is known to the board as twenty four, twenty five dash three be expelled for possession, and or use of drugs, and delivery of controlled substances. The school administrators notified the student's parents of the specific charges underlying the discipline recommendation, as well as the date, time, and place of the disciplinary hearing. Pursuant to the request of the student's parents and as authorized by Michigan Open Meetings Act, section eight, one B, Michigan, MCL fifteen, two six one, one B, the disciplinary hearing was conducted in a closed session meeting of the board. The hearing afforded the student and the student's representatives an opportunity to respond to the charges and to present pertinent evidence for the board's consideration. The board has carefully considered all evidence produced in this student's disciplinary hearing. Now, therefore, be resolved that a preponderance of evidence establishes that on or around six four, twenty twenty five, the student was in possession and or use of drugs and delivery of controlled substances in violation of student code conduct. Based on careful consideration of following factors, the board determines that expulsion is warranted. The student's age, the student's disciplinary history, whether the student has a disability, the seriousness of behavior, whether the student posed a safety risk, whether restorative practices are a better option, and whether lesser interventions would address the behavior. The student is permanently expelled from the district. During the time of expulsion, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any functions at the district without prior written approval from appropriate administrator. Consistent with revised school code sections eleven A and one three one one, parentheses one, the board finds that the interests of the district are served by this resolution. Administrators are directed and authorized to implement all terms of this resolution and are delegated all necessary authority to do so. All resolutions and parts of the resolution that conflict with this resolution are hereby rescinded.
I move to adopt the resolution as read.
Support. We have a motion by member Bobzine, supported by member Tru, to support the resolution as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution adopted.
I move to go into closed session at 7:07 PM in accordance with the open meetings act, act two six seven, nineteen seventy six, for the purpose of student disciplinary hearing, student number two zero two four dash two five dash four.
Support. We have a motion in support. Vote call vote please. Seven oh seven PM. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosemont?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobzine?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. DeBach?
Yes.
We are now in closed session. Okay, after some long, difficult conversation, whereas the administrative, administration has recommended that a student whose identity is known to the board as twenty four, twenty five dash to be expelled for physically assaulting another student and using threatening language towards another student in violation of student code conduct. Whereas school administration notified the student's parents of the specific charges underlying the discipline recommendation, as well as the date, time, and place of the disciplinary hearing. Whereas pursuant to the request of the student's parents and authorized by Michigan Open Meetings Act, section eight, parentheses B, Michigan Code Law fifteen, two six eight, one B, the disciplinary hearing was conducted in a closed session meeting of the board. Whereas the hearing afforded the student and the student's representative an opportunity to respond to the charges to be present, pertinent, or to present pertinent evidence to the board's consideration. The board has carefully considered all the evidence produced in this student disciplinary hearing. Now, therefore, be resolved that a preponderance of the evidence established that on and around six ten twenty five, the student physically assaulted another student and used threatening language towards another student in violation of student code conduct. Based on careful consideration of all of the following factors, the board determines that expulsion is warranted. The student's age, the student's disciplinary history, where, whether the student has a disability, the seriousness of behavior, whether the behavior posed a safety risk, whether restorative practices are a better option, or whether lesser interventions would address the behavior. The student is permanently expelled from the district. During the time of the expulsion, the student may not be on school grounds or attend any functions of the district without prior written approval from appropriate administration. The student may petition the board for reinstatement no sooner than April sixth, twenty twenty six, and possibly be reinstated no sooner than the first semester of the twenty twenty six, twenty seven school year. Before the board considers a reinstatement petition, the student must demonstrate, demonstrate successful partition, participation in an appropriate counseling program approved by the board that includes both group and individual counseling. Demonstrate successful participation in an appropriate anger management program approved by the board that includes both group and individual counseling. Submit to the board competent and credible evidence from an appropriately licensed and credentialed professional. The student does not pose a risk of harm to students, to the student or others. Establish that the student has not engaged in contact during the period of expulsion that may be viewed by the board as detrimental to the student's continued education in the district. Complete to the satisfaction of the board all recommendations contained in any psychological or counseling report and demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the student received educational instruction and cooperatively participated in well-meaning behavioral misconduct in an educational program during the period of expulsion. Consistent with the revised school code section eleven A and one three one one, one, the board finds that in the interest of the district are served by this resolution. Administrators are directed and authorized to implement all terms of this resolution and are delegated all necessary authority to do so. All resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with this resolution are hereby rescinded.
I move to adopt the resolution as read.
We have a motion in support to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So if I'm behaving, that means that there is an expulsion for the next school year per state law of physical assault. However, you have been given opportunities for school, BLA, in ways that you can continue your education next year. And if for some reason, we, you do not finish that, then you can appeal to return here for your, on the twenty six, twenty seven. Yeah, we've got five BLA. I don't know. I mean, we assume there's somebody there through a record request. Thank you. All right, we are going to take a short, but really break. We have to go home. We need motion to close to post call.
I move to take a five minute break. It is eight fourteen. We will reconvene at eight twenty.
We have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene.
Um, I move to reconvene at eight twenty one.
We have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I move to go into closed session at eight twenty one PM in accordance with the open meetings act, act two six seven, nineteen seventy six, for the purpose of an appeal petition, student number two zero two four dash two five dash two. Support.
Any motion in support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is now in closed session. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosemont?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobzine? Mrs. Jewitt?
Mr. DeBach? Yes.
We are now in closed session. Okay, we are back in open session.
I move to deny the opportunity to hear the appeal for student two thousand two four dash two five dash two.
We have a motion by member Rosemont, supported by member Tru, to deny the opportunity to hear the appeal for student two zero two four dash two five dash two. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. If the appeal was denied based on the conditions that we had already offered for this opportunity to be reinstated, and hopefully those who take place of some of the behaviors can be re-identified. I understand. But I think, I think everyone here gives a behavior need to address and, and share it up and then they'll help them. So I just wish it best and we will have success. Now we go back into closed session.
I move to go into closed session at eight thirty nine PM for the purpose of superintendent evaluations.
Support. We have a motion in support of closed session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation at eight oh nine PM. All those in, at eight thirty nine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Vote call.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosemont?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobzine? Mrs. Jewitt?
Yes.
All right, superintendent comments?
Um, started the year, so they actually wanted to get them on, um, so, um, we think it's very hot. And, um.
Nice. Will those be posted too? Like, for people to see, you know?
Yeah, we were just starting this, so we started, I, we started to, you know, everybody helping with this, very, yeah. So, so they're not, uh, doing, uh, uh, events, so that, that they did, they were, uh, uh, so we did that, got it out. But, um, but it's, it's fine watching it, just like, uh, right, uh, that, uh, um, so, um, so, like, if you think that, oh, we already got, I mean, the power, uh, that, 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 that,
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, cause those are the, like, we're gonna do the media broadcast in here. Uh, the team actually, I don't remember if Jesse mentioned it, but Janelle, Jesse, and the partners team and the Bart Nalo team went to, um, state art facility in Rosehill that they had, they did their own, they included it. So we are literally doing everything that they had. Um, and the kids were in there and they just loved it. So we're going to utilize that for, um, really getting out podcasts, um, community highlights, student highlights. It's just gonna be a really, kind of all student life. Um, and we are going to have a media publications class this year that Jordan Miles is going to teach.
Well, and would you like to be part of that?
Well, Sam Tolaney, um, he, oh, he also likes to roast. She's gonna, she's also, cause it can count as a visual performing arts credit. So, but Mr. Morrow's gonna do it more specifically on, like, marketing and media and, um, PR, like written, cause they have to, they're the English kind of teams for that. So, um, that will take place next year. But the media broadcast will be done um, for the twenty seventh school year. And they're gonna actually have to build temporary walls, um, that whole corner in the rooms will be, uh, there's gonna be like a media room with a green screen with all the big equipment. But then the editing room is gonna be separate from that and it'll have like the glass window. It's, it's sharp. It's really, we're excited about that.
What grade levels do that need to be?
So, um, depending on student interest, we could have it at junior high and senior high. Probably for the sake of rolling it out, we'll do it exactly a lot for someone who's been heard on it before. Uh, they do training. That was part of the biz pack. Um, so it'll be high school first. Very exciting.
Anything else?
I do not have anything else.
I move to adjourn at nine thirty one PM.
Support. We have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Needing adjourn.